Does he go to these places?
Yeah.
Are you?
The vice of the federal district.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you.
Being of the city council Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock P. M. This evening, we will be live broadcasting over San Antonio County online. Some of the procedures will change a little bit as we move forward. It's kind of attached tonight with our ice and our CD, so we'll go from there. But first of all, the main act is the brochure on the wall or on the table here, also above that C-hole, if anybody is interested in reading the legal on that. First of all, roll call.
Ideas?
Here.
Apple?
Here.
Eagle?
Here.
Cready?
Here.
Booth?
Here.
Horford?
Here.
No other announcements, but we do have some people to announce to the council and to the public, so I'll turn it out over to the last.
Sure. So the seating is, as you guys know, we have medical vacancies. Also, we have our new sea clerk, Christina Faisal, present, and she's starting on Monday. And we also have Joe Butler, who's in the back, and he'll be starting Presley the first of March. Joe is the chief of police. Sorry, thank you. Doesn't look like a chief of police. So excited to be able to have him on.
Then we do have candidate. Do you want to stand and introduce yourself in a full speech?
I'm Mr. Nelson. I'm very glad to take your job, and I'm Mr. Oscar. I am Ken from San Antonio County. I'm based in Bagdad, Nebraska, graduated high school in nineteen eighty-eight, and I went into that high school. And of course, at the age twenty-two now, I'm a marine, so I had all the answers nearly because we do have a joint right. So I didn't know what I'm going to do, but I think I do a lot of things by just doing what I'm saying. I decided to land first, and so I'm a long person who put in eighteen thirty-three, and so continuing that, I've got twenty-seven year long person experience in my belt. I joined up this year with the state troll, retired from the state troll in two thousand and eighteen, became a financial advisor, retired, always held a panel for our Tony Shaw, so I said, well, file that a sure student who used to make man on the ground one time, file that he's going to be retiring, and listen to that, get him out of conversation, and tell him I was going to donate him that one show as well. So where I am, I annexed me back with everybody to disagree with my opinion when I talked about Shaw's position in county. And so I even financed with Pennington, and in order to do this campaign, and be able to people, doing that a hundred people, so I am surely doing such a job, and afford to serve the people here in San Antonio County. Again, I also can get candidates myself, but I'm going to show this in the round town, so I don't have any issue.
Thank you.
The city, the city council does not make any endorsements. If another candidate or other candidate who aren't for county office won't come, we'll give them the same opportunity.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other announcements. Department head reports, so they're all in your brochure or your packet. The thing is, the department heads want to realize or talk about their report. I asked you to go to the podium, so Cameron will meet you, and we'll be seeing. So first of all, Joe, any comments?
The Wednesday superintendent, who was last month having a wet moisture, so we got two cell phones that, well, no, she's there. So one way we can focus on cleanup, we've been cleaning up the dumpster area, we've cleaned up the burn pile. Out of the burn pile, Nebraska part of the environment energy hat, especially on the twenty-fifth of January, power checked out with violation, which was good. The street permit is in need of a couple pieces of equipment. We talked to the street committee about looking into that for us, that they could continue to look at our readers and so we knew better street plan. We had two hires this month, four times these other, I hardly see an order, but there was nothing more to know than we were.
Any questions? No.
Thank you.
John?
Hello, this is Ward's, and third of all, we, I think it was kind of hard as far as working the packet to write in that deck over the numbers of pretty early enrollment as far as a few calls, something left to accompany, they're doing knife fuckers at them, they complete with the previous rule of our floor, if they just want to dive in, the only thing that needs to be done is basically canvas and dry up with the camera wires. They were going to dry it there, sound dead, so it's all yesterday, it's all the same rules, and yes, we're going to go ahead, we've got a side indicating we're doing it on the front, so it's really very thick, we're going to use that quite a lot. They're also, we're on base, we have a mock track system, and play with our base, you know, that's the system that's through the vast estate control, and they track the officers and the cars, and they're out of the hole, and it's not just volume increase, it does have these safety concerns, and we're on our way to adding, but there's a training boat that's very important, it's online training, and so it should be able to take it very quickly. So about it, I'm very excited to have Jill Sartre here to do a little bit, and once he gets to, I'm moving forward.
Good question.
The J S system, the substandard chairs, yeah, we give our J S some paybacks on the burn, so the information there is all on.
It's a reference.
Yes, it was all on, it's on the works. So, you know, the last year.
Thank you. I think you've stepped forward in being a researcher. The other one I need is.
I brought it in, that, yeah, we're going to give the point one one annual report.
Okay.
And we're honored to have that board, and it's a bit of a bit of one.
Thank you.
Director of MS, twenty twenty-one annual course package, so I just want to kind of highlight a little, do that, and add some talking points there. Last year's are easy on average, I feel like I say that pretty much every year, so we continue to trend upward. The difference between twenty twenty-one years past is traditionally our trend was around ten percent increase in coal mining, and the last year, we busted through the data on that, we had an eight percent increase. It has nearly a ninety-four calls per service, so obviously pandemic is huge of a center spots still, seeing that in community every day. There's nearly expected new layer of vehicles in March, which I know is a little tender to ignore that, but we're excited about that. Start two thousand nine's, which happens once, which the origin's got a lot of issues, it's kind of a whole, I mean, it's been. This was a mess previously, it just had a reminder that January first, we're asked to cover the northern portion of the Golden Hill higher trick, and that was a sign of January one, I've not seen anyone for that, but that is a result of the C-12 higher trick, no longer binding us to that area. So, very recent, so it's not area, we're doing us about two hundred from miles of the county, which is about a third of the county and city in overall, so. Page two, we show our staffing moves, limited number trend volunteer ETS, we've got a few parameters, but overall, we wouldn't pretend that's happening, so. Our companies are very, those will recognize our annual respect, and I'm just going to bank it here in two weeks. Includes action codes from last year, if you have to go down. On page six, most of our agrees is nine one, so our answer numbers would increase between years prior, last year we're actually two forty-eight, so we have more, a hot logical transfers here, most of our agrees are nine one, so. The one thing that I like to show, it's the kind of, we are like overall in curse, so eight percent of the volume overall occurs in the city limits of Wahoo, it's twenty percent of that occurs outside, mostly those rural districts that we serve, so because of our volumes, honestly, I've continued to have conversations about, about finding and about responsibility of the MS, and some of that, like some of those, speak out to me, we face in terms of having deserved to work district, that's the responsibility of the city, so. You're getting this trending, our volume, since we started keeping a really good track from thirteen to twenty-one, so you've got constant upward trend volume, and then our data we break down, not really a lot of difference in all way at least, so a lot of people are thinking, well, it's still kind of bad in communities, and we cases are probably slower, we can't really, that's really not case at all, so. And then five pages, shows are along by month, so we have three record written months for the year twenty-one, which July gives many months, September eighty-nine, and October of August, that's essentially what I'm going to correct it under months a month, so, so three days is kind of what we're going to have in those terms in terms of our volume, so. With that, I hope there's any questions you have for me, and if none is available, so.
The club, the taker, the bin, had happened, so.
So it's gotten a little better, however, it's, these are the sources they buy, so I've had on top of my docket for a while to try to find new solution for the C, could be still pacing rate, we still have a little bit, but I feel like for what they will have to say maybe, maybe when you recover that, so. I have a couple different companies, one which also charges a percentage based on revenue received, and the other one actually charges flat rate per run, so the flat rate one is a little attractive to me because you make your margin on some of the tire quality calls, or certain entertainment fat percentage off of each run, and they got reviews, so my goal is to use better research and hopefully bring that puzzle to council this year, and with that, it's always very muddy and difficult just because you have to think, like, see claims, you know, some claims in, in the healthcare arena for up to a year, the insurance payers and whatever, so it will be a mess when we, if we decide to transition, but hopefully it'll tough on them, so.
Okay, move on to the, there's another report in your packet, if you have some questions on those, the department head, you're briefly reaching him. Consent agenda for the line, three items, time acceptance of any accused absence by the mayor or city council members, second admits of the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, and the third item is the end of the January twelfth, twenty twenty-two library board meeting. Any questions on these three items? Seeing that?
I'm sure.
And issue? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Horford?
Yes.
Cready?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rattle?
Yes.
Okay, well, put a series of associated action on the agenda tonight, number four or title business, we're going to ask tonight, it's not requiring a public meeting, the first is the, 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 item A is looking at to take a substantial completion as recommended by the engineer. Any questions on that? We have an engineer speaking at, but any questions on action on that? If not, what's your pleasure?
What's your approval?
Second.
Same.
Then motion second, approved. That's what we're thinking of the other questions. Roll call.
Cready?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rattle?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Second item on there, B, application number three, and final, do open fence for four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents. Any ideas? Any questions? Council on that, no call on pay application.
Cready?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rattle?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Approved, and if you want to make any comments on the project?
I can do that. I'd like to pay one more thing. There's a lot of immediate, massive funds for additional funds for the document, or other memories, over six million dollars, and the six of us on social media, which are paid out of twenty-five thousand dollars, so. There will be April, maybe March fifth, or March day, I should say, there'll be other things that go on, so. Try it, it can wait, please do, but, or we still have the dogs, Jake Shutter's dollars, who I was going to think so. Thank you.
Number two, the twenty twenty-one intersection and urban improvement project, again, certification of substantial completion as recommended by the engineer.
If you have any questions on that specific project, it is substantially complete, there will be some things in the spring when it comes to seeing, par seeing, that will need to be followed up on, but I think those didn't work, and we're on board with accepting this city condition.
Any questions?
Motion?
I'll say that.
Okay, motion second for to do the certification of completion. Any questions? No, no call.
Horford?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Cready?
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, the change order number two, to file aggressive quantities and run for
a contract time extended, with the same orders, a deduction of eighty-four thousand sixty-two thirty-five.
Sure, so there, we see the change order, there's actually the decrease of almost eighty-five thousand, and that is when the project was bid, we weren't sure what the condition was going to be when the old paving was removed, so they had included that aggregate would be needed to improve it to, as well, or to the upgrade for that, and it wasn't needed in any of the locations, so that's the reason why for the change order. The date, the original contract substantial collision date was on November one, we're asking for changing that January fourth, with the final payment application expected originally was December first, so we weren't expecting that to May first, so. I know Collins, they were on the job, they'd have a few cuts here and there, but it's not something that I feel like should be assuming what they had damages or anything. The mid one final payment date is that way because there will be some, sorry, not seeing work that needs to be, just to make sure that the test comes up, so. If you have any questions, I will, right, in my next.
There are no costs, like, they overcome this for the extra time?
No.
So I'm sure like, it's not a big exception?
Right. Questions? Okay.
Motion second, approve the change order number two, is there any questions? Same now, roll call.
Cready?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rattle?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Number C is application number four, Andy Collins, contract date twenty-one thousand nine seventy-two seventy-six.
So with this payment application, the balance remaining, which not, then we would want final payout would be at twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Well, the work is done, but there is some linkage, and yeah.
Motion second.
Second. The motion second, questions in the capital. Same now, roll call, on pay application.
Cready?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Horford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Eagle?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, twenty twenty-two overlay intersection and curb ramp project, A, approved plans and best authorized, calling for this.
Okay, so I'm going to stand there, and add that, if you can, please. But yeah, but, let me. Okay, so the twenty twenty-two asphalt overlay and street project includes work on Main Street from seventh to twelfth, on East Street from sixth to twelfth. And so the project will include addressing the, the boches that come in from east to west on, on, all the way down on the vision, and then it will address the handicap rock ramps, will address storm store that needs to be done, and once all of that is done, then we will mill overlay, and we'll have one stretch of overlay on from twelfth to sixth to twelfth, so. And so that, that's essentially the scope of the project, there's some of you believe that's going to happen at the same time, there's some, a, one, 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 one.
There'll be one, we'll send the left, on the left end on the inside. Yeah. Yeah.
Which currently, currently is not one, one in that location, so the goal is to include, or to improve the redundancy of the autism, and probably will improve water pressure, well, with the.
Right, yes.
So.
If we cut a lot of lines in the streets, it's now, it's now.
Right, east and west, and this, one mile, one mile, two miles, two and a half. So we have this work from John Berry, and they talked about phasing, Monday, we conducted a study at eleven street and seeing south, and then once that work is done, that phase two will move into the intersection where it needs to be done, and a handicap sidewalk ramps, and the storm stores, and then once that was done, then the overlay will be done. So things are going to be the aspect overlay. Not a lie, when I continue of cost, I was pretty surprised at the price, so we start breaking it down to all work that's being done. Joe reviewed the, in your opinion, of cost, and they're in line with the book that we, the prices that we had for the twenty twenty-one project. So we're talking about a total project cost of one point three million dollars, in terms of that page, some of you got four, and some of you didn't, so I apologize. The back page, if you don't do, I have to down, consider with some yellow work, I took work and okay, um, that is estimate, which sidewalk, hey, and coming there, molding mission off in troll, and structure work, just three days, eight days of work, and so total order, you can see out of this project, we have two hundred and fifty thousand, that would be mill overlay, there's a hundred and forty-five across the sidewalk and handicap ramps, and so when you start breaking it down that way, it's, it's still a lot of money, but I guess it is what it is, and it's, it's work that needs to be done. On the continuity, and then design infrastructure engineering, some of that, which we have already incurred in things to what we're going to go for bits and then there's overlay, or overlay accusing. We did not have all this in the budget for this fiscal year, but we do, we have two hundred and fifty, fifty-five, three hundred and fifty-five thousand in the budget that is not already allocated for the projects. We do have some Mesa side, which we're kind of looking at maybe using for a downtown overlay, which is not really a budget, that about one point one million dollars, but we're, if we're going to move forward with this project, we're probably going to need to tap into that, and what I think we're talking about with the street committee that we get to, down on project, we're going to be, the project's going to be much bigger than what we're talking about here, and we may need to look at financing that than the maintenance, so.
We're here. Yeah. Thank you.
But if, if you decide to infer, I'd like us to answer the questions, they would have to, once we have the, they've been already doing their contract, we'd have to look at what they're doing, and that's aside, to allocate toward this project, so.
And do you remember who was last name, which you didn't, like, in the past? He's got, he's got, he's got, he's got. And who's actually, you see, the videoing, water mains, down, down, the water?
Well, they, they, you don't need to, we have a lot of.
Here's what I had in mind, you know, the MSR has got more money, funds coming in from the, all the federal government, they're not quite sure how they're going to distribute it. They asked, we asked back in October, November, kind of funding off of the city project, they did this part, I think, downtown, it was zero percent financing, and a little no forgiveness, okay? So they asked, after they got, this is not, they got additional funds coming to pass to the agency, would it be possible for one to get a pair off? I mean, zero set, no organs, is one thing, could be a set, as a roofing, is which one you get off, and they said, yes, it could happen, you don't want to verify that out, so this is kicker. We're not going to finish plans because if we finish plans, it's going to have to have bits, and there's certain documents in that funny back, that we have to put in our plans as well, so kind of goes that, we can be bent. So for restrictions after three four months before we get a seat with the project, there's going to kind of, I think, put the wire in this year, which is not bad, so. I think you're open for doing downtown, so if we start, I might be sorry, listen.
We'll get a bit on this.
We did this on this, and the doctor back today, he says they, they do have funds to have to, to, neither this, not using the federal or state money, so there's no restrictions on it, is that acceptable? Because some of the, I have, we can reach, everything, I have, all kinds of stuff we do, we do.
Questions?
Is there, I mean, we can't put time for anyone, this is a lot of bit, I work, you get some good bits, I want it in the summer, I mean.
Well, I've painted a letter from John, and see the, bit of this scale from Marshburg, with also work, and as we have to, we're in secret, I mean, his, can't, it's laid out here as target, a final condition of November fifteenth, of substantial collision on October fifteenth, and how you have done this, to one, I'd be really nice to go see the scene in the fall, because it always, they work that out, I mean, Bert has time to germinate,
There's another six more before me, I'm burning up this summer. Those were the table, which is nice. Especially improved two streets theory, I mean, I would be commotion to.
It's amazing.
I've just, I've just, I've just, I've just.
I think.
Thanks, though.
We have, we're, 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 I'm sorry, I would be motion to approve.
No files and specs to call the bits.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No call.
Cready?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Horford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Number four, all special visiting license preparing services, so this on March seventeenth, April eighth, the city wants to search basement two eleven east second street.
So if you recall, last meeting, you approved a special visiting license for the, this is two, this speaker, you're limited to six, Kansas, and you can, if you.
I'll make whatever.
Just maybe second to group. Roll call.
Neil?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Cready?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Horford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Number five, request Isaiah staff to prove the river super siblings of burn primary in final parts, or rehab lots one through three, block seventeen, any addition, say you all need to combine lots into one parcel.
So, this is the big map, we are going to, we're asking them to change this, because we have hearts addition, and somebody else's addition, and this will be called like lot one, a rehab lot one, two, and three, lot one seventeen, any addition, so this is the hearts, which is a, ten and eleven, we want to consolidate all of their property into one parcel.
It doesn't mean for the second position.
No, it doesn't. And the way it has to do is, we need to initiate eventually constructive rush, because they're all separate lots, and merging this, they would be able to have just one setback on the boundary of the property, so. I guess it's not a combination, we lay the perimeter, just sort of like.
There's been, actual action.
Hopefully.
I'd make motion for the way. Second.
Then a motion second to approve the, the questions. Roll call.
Horford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Cready?
Yes.
Booth?
Uh, request resolution to authorize installation of C-B-L-A, pay land sign on dust of three.
So we've got this for, actually, and this is, also, we sneak it clean up, so this would address the limits from just separate boundaries on Chatham Street, forty-five to J Road, from J Road to Wahoo Creek Bridge, it'll be forty, from Wahoo Creek Bridge to twenty-first Street on North Chatham, it would be thirty, and then for twenty-third Street north, it'd be forty-five.
But it publicizes the right spot because there's some discrepancies in where it starts up.
Yes, and although we have one resolution that comes to the entire street.
This case, I'm sorry, is not a big decision.
There's a twenty-third, it's up to traffic, forty-five, technically goes all G O, north and down starts twenty-third, so there's a gap, but West Street, so the other one can be going fast, and so it's puts all the other ways, that stops for safety, that's.
Also, the speed limit, a wide forty-five, a forward way, a fifteen, where, where is not the same though?
I believe, well, thirty is what Chatham Street is through town.
Or not.
I'm not into that. But you've been north of fifty Street currently, it goes down to twenty-five, which just doesn't make sense, so we're keeping that consistent. North twenty-third, it's already forty-five, and talking with Sullivan from Wahoo Creek Bridge South, forty is where it's at, and then which is a forty-five, I believe, I don't drive that often, it is.
So it doesn't change much?
No, it's just.
It's lying out of where it starts and stops makes sense.
I'll make motion to approve the.
Second. Approved resolution?
Yes.
Any questions, Tom? Roll call.
Neil?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Cready?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
From seven, authorization for purchase replacement truck of the street department is recommended by the street committee and street supervisor. Who are we replacing, and what are we looking at?
Everybody has two projects or three, they're high, it's got on their, they're, I'd say, it should be out of the street period. The vehicle has a machine that eight miles or two or three miles of asphalt patch, and asphalt patch and these trucks are half hundred pickup pulling that trailer. Um, last month we had Axol back about where I get it. Thank for the name. I don't know that I had somebody call it before they went out. But we believe something that's having to be enough to be able to handle pull it further, handle pull this path machine. And then what I would like to see we've kind of looked around what we can get. Um, I would like to see crew be prepared for any job that they do out in the street, not just a lot of tools in the backup pickup to go to dump had it on hand at all times. If any of them go, replace an emergency sign or hole is on that truck. For the concrete work is on that truck. If it's anything that's your move, they have a third proposal on that truck. They may be ready to. The court is just very outdated and biggest thing for me is AD and I just think that's I say just send them out there to do the job with resources that they have and it's cost us maybe two or three jobs out. But it's it's time to look and do something different.
What is the truck that you thought?
We look at it's used truck. It's a two thousand eleven Ford F three fifty. Um, it has a full closed pad in the back that they'll get some articles in there. It'll be out of the weather. Um, it has a deterrent on it. So anything you need to plug in is capable of playing. Um, it is wheel drive. I think that always said money because four wheel drive is really not needed because if four wheel drive is needed, we're probably getting close. So do whatever they can tell and then we handle every need new and feel we agree. The price was twenty one thousand.
Was that?
It's a whole that's not something that had it with some requested going to give it. But I have to be prepared.
Do you have the budget for the street's permanent fifty thousand allocated for vehicles for this year? Consider funding the budget.
It's an old model truck. It's got eighty plus a mile on it. It's very clean. Um, my review is it's it's really good shape and it's made out of great from what you have.
Best energy.
It's gas. I would love to have a diesel, but I don't think it's necessary. We're a lot harder than town. So, you know, metal is given or other experience bigger jobs, you know, taking out phone out concrete, making out panels, stuff like that. I really don't want to see crews driven. I'll block your holiday or bust town though. We're low on a truck. I'm going to track it out over there and just keep everything safe.
The truck also has a cargo cover.
Yeah, it's a wheel box.
Four four months.
They have a paper.
The top of it. They had a top of it.
Yeah.
That we can have it quickly.
Oh, yeah.
And also has the. Two.
Correct. It's the next of brothers that got it. I did research on it and pulled it up. So we really just that cargo box I buy that dog I pre-saw is between eighteen and twenty five thousand. A new pickup is going to cost us about fifty thousand. So I look at about seventy, seventy five grand for a comparable truck new. So used for twenty one with the miles I thought was just really a good deal.
Here she's like. They they were you grew up to what could happen in two thousand two. And in a clear feeder, copy of I was wanting to actually get tool. He's been putting what he found and things needed. It was correct or ninety four, ninety five. That's just five. So funny.
They look a lot there.
Any other questions? Let's load it.
That makes sense.
That's okay. Okay. Uh, now any other questions? Rojo.
Apple?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Booth? Yes. Orford?
Yes.
I guess.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm not very annual payment report for October third, twenty twenty to spring three, twenty twenty one.
Should have been your packet. Um, don't didn't really have any funding that I made. There's a few instances of um, airs and pause, but majority of them have been corrected. So um, if you have any questions about it, we do have guess in this page I called your attendant. There's three accounts that are off here. One was the operations account. That's the account that operator who is at that bar, they deposit money in and they write either wash price, uh, tax auto or refresh the cash out. And so any deposits in that account uh, gets transferred by the um, by the horizontal K O into the private reserve account. Maximum prize that pays out here in Wahoo is twenty five thousand. We have four three thousand two hundred seventy five dollars in that. That's actually our money, our money. So let's start with the first of the fiscal year. So after first lockover, there was twenty five thousand, roughly twenty five thousand dollar transfer out of this large press reserve into the city community benefit fund, which is at September thirtieth, thirty one thousand in. So there are twenty five will be about fifty thousand in that account. So if you have any questions, then best answer them.
Any questions?
I'm currently only any entities on the community better than those own cash would be used on special purposes.
The last large thing we use it for was a match for our housing rehab grant money. And that's all we've been saying. The Kino fund allocated into our.
No, sorry. That's.
I'm moving to a certain Kino.
It's a. I do. Any other question? Look on.
Could she?
Yes.
I guess. Apple?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Booth? Yes. Orford?
Yes.
Now, in consideration of requests for persons are paid for the developer property owned by the city of Wahoo, block two and block five, Davidson subdivision. Uh, this is probably uh, as we know, either panel hall or south hall depending on what college it was, uh, the city was able to clerk child to that property. And uh, it's time for us to see what contractors want to do uh, with they want to do things this project. So we'll see where that goes. And then uh, if we don't uh, have anything there, then some of the city is what we do. So.
Yeah, I'm just. So the last couple days of your packet just a request for proposals. Um, I just want to go through a couple of things with with this. Um, we've been history of the property. Um, this property has actually entered by this assistant. So that makes eligible for back to finance. Uh, the property of lots of the council and the city law that near the parks is the Ozon R three. And I think just as normal conversations over the past year. So uh, I feel like it's your intent that this be used for housing. And uh, I got we had some conversation about park amenities, but uh, from Kevin, he likes the park many or recreation many that's complimentary to whether the housing is to whether it's a basketball court or pickleball or test court, some kind of um, amenity that matches what the residential area will be. And again, on the second page, I have just I threw out number of twenty percent of that property was the buffer and anchor could be commit to that public recreation amenity. I don't know if that's uh, have my view of Kevin, whether she points out to twenty five percent or if any of you have any thoughts on that. Um, and then again, this is my first chapter. So I'm definitely open to your thoughts, but um, tagging for a number of things that are eligible expenses that can be um, essentially refunded um, that can go towards, but I'd like to sort those out. So that is very clear to the developer who owns this project that it's these things, bullish and expenses, utility extensions or upgrades, development of public transportation and any parking private invasion and landscaping of public rest away. Um, there are other things like engineering or your facade or a couple of things that that I feel like for these expenses and you start looking at numbers, um, we're going to eat up the tip amount that'd be available with these expenses. Um, I said I'm intending to I had a number of people asking about this. If you're online to put this, then I will share with those people when steps aside visits. Um, we would give the zoning information. We would help would hate to have the occupants identified in flight though that um, that's very clear from there beginning. And then um, we would receive those proposals and my intention to have the city council review them. Um, and then proposals would be um, considered on following criteria that also provided and will fulfill needs of the community within the neighborhood, the recreation amenity provided, uh, experience of the developer, high mind for development and the amount insured for the taxing and financing. And this is my is a stat at this and I've given my thoughts or suggestions. This could be presented to you before, which is in the history. The south hall is built in nineteen fifty five. Uh, tents course were built approximately nineteen seventy five and there's utility information on that. Have all the people other developers interested in seeing this? Yes.
Very good. I do work with this and I hopefully the developers are wanting to do something.
Do you I'm looking at on the um, minimum of forty percent of property.
Wouldn't that well? I don't see what I just come who they are. Let's see what the one was due.
Drawn is like about one or four acres. Looking in that area. That's within the property lines. I measured that.
Yeah, I was doing I really had a little something come back from idea on on the park area, recreational area, whatever what that is needed for, you know.
Do we even put a number in there?
I don't know that it's necessarily equitable with that. If we do, they have hold of it. They could all make adjustments.
I can guess.
I'm just saying, you know, I can see a recreation area included in this. Um, you know, we got up to.
This is our open situation.
I leave out that somebody whatever their what their thought is and how they want to do all that.
This one's. Things will be.
Well, I'll give you. You know, this is wings. It's a good enough one for your. It depends. It's similar. I give it enough makeup for that, right?
People that reach out to me said, uh, it's basketball is me. Cause that's. There's our kids in the area.
And it's one of few places that are actually the recent base. They're very basketball.
I would agree. We did point C to go. Some.
Yeah, it's on. I would say it's a basketball who gets it in a nice new court. Um, but. I don't know.
Sure.
Not that's necessary.
Well, they they gave Kevin games that, you know, if it is senior housing or targeted for fifty five and older, I heard that there's a lot of interest in pickleball.
Sure.
Junior zone?
Okay. That would be complimentary to that.
Right. Yeah, the way for example, it's that's me. I just don't know that the whole which was a sick of the property that part is.
Hey.
We have.
Sorry.
The man is flexibility. We're on all flexibility. So we do see.
Yeah.
The.
Eddie Gray's how the basketball court, the ball court test court always be similar. Yeah, she says that. Be curious if there is twenty percent of one acre or maybe that falls, but it seems like that's a league acre for the actual. Some sort of.
Well, that's. Pickleball is more uh, part design right on the back. Cause I heard twenty five hundred bed is a test court. So I remember by everybody.
I don't know if you heard that.
I'm gonna come there. Come on. Looks like a current court is point one seven acres.
Point one seven. So when I say a third. A third.
As you can. It's. Massive.
Well, if it's not required, that may use as a social. Development. And we just do it that way.
Any other questions? It's going to be kind of a little bird today. And the meeting too, until we had a discussion from Joe. And it's I'm sure we have opportunity to have some very feedback and say our work that we're working on this. So we have a pool of counsel.
Well, as you're saying today, if third acres is about twice the size of the basketball court, Sarah, as you're seeing like more inappropriate, you know, size for part of maybe it's all right, but they can.
Well, if you want a submitted proposal, you should provide good recreation many.
And they may have some very creative things to do. We never thought of. So I don't know if you're boxing or ideas in yet.
Leave open as much as we can.
So we can motion proceed with the residents.
Sorry.
Okay, motion. I'm going to say we do uh, go on with our RVs for the development of that property. Any questions? Rojo.
Could she?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Sega? Yes. Orford?
Yes.
Uh, candy can't update consideration and hustle approval of the development unit with people of asset demand stress, Inc. or consideration approval of important extra rate in two, one, two, and six. A county colleagues of vision of if many has been working on this, we'd open myself, Melissa and Travis, plus representatives from the church. Uh, been going on for a year and a half and uh, we're trying to keep it moving. And I'm going to turn over to kind of explain where I at this for the night.
Yeah. And then yeah, you talk about it passing generally, you know, we thought we had generally agreed to terms of development unit about years ago, but obviously COVID and the construction cycle and all those things are handling for a little bit of a wrinkle in everything that was being discussed and done. Um, and so we had a bit of a sale. We didn't have accomplished much for a few months. And then luckily uh, the owners of the property did reach out to obtain a little counsel and a little counsel has kind of kept this thing up there and just a little bit more on time with respect to that result. Uh, this potential issue, we've gone through a couple iterations of what development agreement terms like he and essentially the idea here is that we have basically three projects potentially going on. We have the project, the old gymnasium space, which by necessity and the required parking would include the uh, the area next to calling place that was recently acquired then the merging of those that lot that was recently acquired with gym space so they can eat on some bad requirements. They can meet parking requirements and then the renovation of that particular structure. I think all of that as in age here is fairly black white. Um, the only that's really changed from our original discussion agreement is the time of that. Um, but the generally seeking, I think we're all on the same page that that they want that project be done willing to commit to completing that particular project as kind of a standalone piece here. Um, and so by virtue of that, we'd go through the replating process to those lots and would agree to a timetable for a game of buildings that provides for engineering ports, doing all the things necessary to start working on the project. Um, the second piece of this is the east hall location. Um, so the old dormitory space is there. That is not a a primary focus of the old property. Um, so that is their kind of secondary timetable there. You've probably seen if driven by their starting place, the windows, they have dried in the. You've probably seen if driven by there, have started to replace the windows, they have dried in the.